And I haven't heard back from Heather.
Okay, I think we should go ahead and get started. Joey, do you want to help you along?
It is 4:07 PM. We will call this meeting of the Lake County Planning and Zoning Commission to order.
If the board wants to... Don't want to get these seats, so should we put you in too, or should they just sit up there?
Should it?
Okay.
Are you sitting there?
I'm sitting there.
I'm sorry, she's going to do it.
Sorry, Jeff.
Turn back and forth. I did get it, thank you.
Okay, good. Okay.
I will ask for a roll call, please.
Heather Lind. Howard Tritt. Howard? We can see Howard on Zoom. Okay. Joey Edwards?
Here.
Steve Stevens is out tonight. David Clark-Berrel?
Here.
Here.
And Jason Murfo?
Here.
Thank you. So staff would just note for the vice chair that while Howard's having some technical difficulties, you still have a quorum, so for tonight's hearing.
Thank you. And we'll call it roll call of county commissioners.
Sarah Edwards?
Here.
Yep.
I was like, Sarah Edwards, I don't know what is.
Sarah March?
Here.
Sarah March.
Here.
And Jeff Beesler, not here.
All right. Any changes or additions to the agenda?
Staff has nothing.
And does everyone had a chance, everyone online, if we had a chance to review the minutes from the October 14th meeting?
Yes.
Any changes or additions to the minutes?
None for me.
If there are no changes or additions, the chair would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the October 14th planning zoning meeting?
I move to approve the meeting minutes from October 14th.
Any second?
Seconded.
Thank you. And updates from staff?
Thank you. So I think that we've kind of brought you up to date on what planning department's been working on. We will be bringing an extension to the moratorium for the sign code based on our work session that we had at our last regular meeting. So we are preparing that resolution and asking for an extension to finish up and based on the input that we received. So we will be doing that. Timber Ridge preliminary plan has been received, has been sent back to the applicant with a based on a completeness review. And we do anticipate that we'll probably hear from them very quickly and that that will become might, well, it may or may not hit a regular meeting before the end of the year. If not, it'd be right after the first. So that's coming. Melissa is working on Box Creek. She can go ahead and provide an update. I think we're
Yeah, we sent it out on referral and received some comments. So we're working with the applicant and the referral agencies to resolve those before we schedule a hearing.
Very good.
And we have several administrative files that are in the works.
TC. Yes, so we have a few of the outfitters who have, I'd say, partially completed applications. So we're really working a lot with those outfitter guides to get complete applications in. We have a variance for setbacks that is almost through completeness review. So we should expect that in the next month or so. Let's see, let's see. Those are the ones that I'm working on.
Great. And then, of course, we are continuing our work on kicking off our values and visioning preparatory work to go into the COP plan update. So we're looking at an engagement team meeting on October 30th. So we're very excited about that. And working collaboratively, of course, with the city on that project. So and there are numerous other projects that the department is working on, but those are some of the highlights for right now. We will also, I think I should also mention that we are looking into the potential of amending our camping regulations and we are getting ready to have a stakeholder meeting with the Forest Service, the LIM, the Continental Divide Group, the Colorado Trail, and some other tourism and PROS department internally. So we are starting the work to look at introducing potentially a code amendment. But we're getting the information to bring it to the planning commission and the board to get support to initiate a code amendment. So we are starting those preliminary discussions as well. So I think that kind of wraps up maybe a quick update of where we are at.
Yep, and short-term rentals. I think that renewal period will be open in the next week or two to give those folks plenty of time to get their applications in before the holiday season.
Oh, and I think one other quick thing, probably just to let the planning commission know and the board, is that CPD is also supporting the transit work and the consultant that has been hired in order to look at our transit planning. And we're also assisting with PROS on climate action plan as well. And so we are also kind of piggybacking on some other planning efforts that are being done at the county as well and adding some capacity to those efforts. So, did you have any questions here?
No, I'm just gonna bring up their climate action plan and just say to you, like, I'm pulling in tomorrow, I'm considering the award of that RFP, the big, and like pulling, trying to I'm interested in reading, like, some counties, San Juan, and some of the communities have plans. Some of them call them a climate action plan, some of them call them a sustainability plan. Trying to do my homework to see exactly what it is that different sized communities are incorporating into that. Just so we don't underdict or dissuade growth, you know.
Right.
Or make sure we do things that is proportionate or commence with, like, other communities have a lot of incentives to offer to implement primary sets, like, and we do not. I think that's our constant challenge of incorporating that of how other communities are doing things. And like, we might want to do those same things, but we don't really, we might not have the same tools to find that.
Exactly, no. You're absolutely right. We've got a lot of, we want to make sure also during that that, you know, we're considering building code and land development code too in whatever kind of strategies or things that might come out of that action planning or the consultant work that we're gonna do. And so, of course, just also to kind of reiterate, I think that we're just kind of sending out this messaging is that we're starting with the values and visioning, with the community engagement piece, which then goes into kind of the tier of the COP plan, and then all of these tactical plans, you know, kind of live underneath the COP plan. So we're really working very closely to make sure that everything is very collaborative and consistent.
It's a lot of moving parts.
There are quite a few moving parts right now, for sure. So and then, oh, housing. I think maybe just a quick update. If we didn't do this last time, we had the groundbreaking ceremony on the 23rd for the affordable housing projects. And to date, I believe that our website has over 70 interested
That's fantastic. You were afraid you wouldn't get much response. Wow.
So we have over 70 people that have responded on the website that say that they are interested in housing. And so we're very excited to be breaking ground.
Was there a goal for that lottery?
Excuse me?
Was there a goal for that lottery?
Was there a?
For how many, was there a goal for how many people you wanted?
Well, I think, I don't think that we actually set a number, but I think that, I think it's close to 78 people. Jackie had told me that we've just come in through the website right now. And I think that we're, you know, really excited. Now, this is housing that will probably be serving on an average, will take an averaging of 140% AMI. So it'll be kind of exciting to have that weight range of housing options and AMI range. So that's really exciting to see all those years of work come to fruition. So we're excited about that. And then we have put out an RFP for the, for a light tech developer on the Harrison Ballfield property. And we have a work session with the board on Tuesday, or is that tomorrow? Sorry. It's already tomorrow. For, to look, we received two proposals. So there is a work session tomorrow with the Board of County Commissioners to look at the two development proposals that have come in. And so, again, very exciting to be looking at meeting some of the critical housing needs of the community in a meaningful way. So now that, I think, includes kind of an update on the department and the things that we've been working on.
And one last question for Sarah. You said that that could be called either a climate plan or a sustainability plan?
What I've seen from other communities that they've, there was a, I believe I found this on the state website.
Because the reaction from the community is very different with those two words. That would be kind of a key, maybe.
Yep. Yep. And I don't, I don't know what we're calling it.
There's been a lot of blowback only because of the climate name. If it had a, not to say that it's a different plan at all, but it's interesting if other communities have already been through that.
Yeah. Yeah. I would like to reach out and learn more.
Interesting.
I know if you guys were more in the conversations, that would be something to share with the group.
That sounds great, yeah.
All right. We've been on any old business that we haven't already addressed?
I don't think so. I think as far as old business, I guess I would just say that we continue to have robust enforcement efforts around different, we've had really great successes in closing some enforcement cases.
Nice.
We are making, we are making progress in that realm. And so our website still has complaint forms readily available to the community. And we do, we do everything based on complaints. So.
That's wonderful, because we're not seeing anything at all from the city side. So it's nice that our new code enforcement officer hit the ground running.
He really did. And he also meets every other week with the city and their group as well to just look at any overlaps regarding building issues.
Sure.
So, but he has been closing, successfully closing and mitigating outstanding situations. And so we are really proud of the progress that he's been able to make since he's been with county.
That's wonderful. All right. Then with new business, we have one file. Is there anything I need to do before I start reading our statement? Very good. Then we will open our, open our hearing. The Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. This statement I am reading shall be incorporated into and made a part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on a conditional use permit application under section 3.6.1 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether a conditional use permit application should be approved. In considering the matter, the commission will address the approval criteria set forth in section 3.6.1F of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure of the hearing should be as follows. Number one, members of the commission and the board will disclose any ex parte communication. Number two, the county staff will make an initial presentation. Number three, the applicant may then make their presentation. After that, any other persons either supporting or opposed to the application may present evidence. Number five, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the commission and the board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the chair. And number six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone's already made the point you wish to make, please simply say so. The chair will also require that all comments be made to the planning commission and the board and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing, and the commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then, there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then retire from the meeting, and the chair of the planning commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. First, it can approve the application with no conditions. Second, it could approve the application with recommended conditions. Third, it could approve the application with newly identified conditions, or it can deny the application. The planning director shall make a record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation to the commission. The commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of this commission or to the form and substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I'll now ask that each planning commission member and then each county commissioner, if you have any ex parte communications to disclose, if so, please disclose them now. Hearing none, I'll ask the county, the staff to make its initial presentation.
Great. Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here in a slightly different seat, but same table. That's how I described it. So here we are. And this is an application that is located at 202 Panarc Drive. It's an accessory dwelling unit that's proposed at this property. And so because it's under an acre in size, it's required to go through a conditional use permit. So that's what the proposal is for. The property is on about .46 acres, so that's how we know that. And there are two units that are proposed inside the structure. And so the upper unit is gonna be the primary residence and might be used for short-term rentals if that's allowed and available to them. And the downstairs unit is, they're contemplating that being a long-term rental. So that's the application. The referrals were sent out to all the agencies that needed to review those. We did hear back from Public Works through the fact they received a driveway permit. There are no other comments related to it. And then also, fire rescue responded with some pretty standard comments we would expect with a residential application. So there are nine approval criteria that the application needs to meet. And we believe it does meet those criteria in particular. It needs to comply with the COP plan. And it does so in the sense that it does make a small incremental step in diversifying housing types and different economic and housing needs within the community. So it is, I like that small incremental. It adds one dwelling unit in this area. So we find that important as part of the comprehensive plan. It also, we look at sort of meeting our provisions of the code. And it meets those. There's a couple of important areas. In terms of stability that it adds to the neighborhood, this is a residential neighborhood. As we all know, Panarc is really zoned and developing as a single-family residences. And there are a number of accessory dwelling units throughout the community, and this adds one more to that mix. So we view it as being compatible with, within that neighborhood and within the character of the area as it has developed over time. Another important part of that has to do with public safety, transportation, and utilities. And there, we received a letter, really a will serve letter through Mewa. We actually sat down with Paul Terranova last Friday just to kind of talk through the water availability for this. But what they did as part of the application, receive a will serve letter. So we know that there's adequate water available there. And in terms of sort of public safety, the road has been recently improved and that's been part of the infrastructure development. So that road is more accessible to the people and the neighbors, and this project helped to extend those lines. So thinking what else is important related to this? I think the second part of the code that we look into is in section five, specifically for accessory dwelling units. And again, we mentioned that this is under an acre, so it requires a conditional use permit. It's only, only one accessory dwelling in it is allowed, and that's what's proposed here. The location is within an existing, or, you know, it's being constructed, but within a principal use. And that's one of the ways an accessory dwelling is allowed, which is also proposed. There's one additional off-street parking space that's proposed with this application as required by the code and the regulations. So again, we've talked about adequate facilities. They are proposing an onsite wastewater treatment system that's been permitted and is under construction as part of this application. So I think, I think that covers the important parts of the code and how this application does comply with the code. We do have suggested motions, and not having exactly done this before, but we have approval without a condition. We also have approval with a condition. And I want to clarify that the, under the conditional approval, condition number one, in error, my mistake, says Parkville Water and Leadville Sanitation District, which are not correct. It's the Mount Albert Water Association, and I guess essentially the county health department. That would be more accurate. So with that, that ends my presentation and answer questions.
Short and sweet.
Yeah.
The house is already constructed, and the upstairs is the current unit that is currently rented out. Is that correct?
It is not occupied. We expect to be applying for the CO as soon as we're ready for that. Final plumbing is still, still needs to be done.
Okay.
Hoping that'll be done this week, but.
Gotcha. It looks like it's already listed out there for lease, so.
We listed it ahead of, ready.
Okay. All right. But neither the upstairs nor the downstairs have been finished yet.
Not, not occupied.
Gotcha.
Not yet, because we're, you know, waiting to be, you know, to be eligible for the CO.
Very good. Questions from the planning commission members?
Yeah, this is Jason. I just had one quick question, and that was, you said this will be owner occupied with a long-term rental for the ADU in the basement, and then possibly short-term rental on the main level with, while owner occupied? I guess I've, there's a little bit unclear.
No, that's correct. Yeah, the application is suggested the upstairs is short-term rent-able, also possibly long-term rentable, and that the basement would be a long-term rental. Am I stating that correctly?
So, you know, for permits available.
Right, right. Everything's a little conditioned upon disapproval with the CUP and then the short-term permit be approved. But, you know, our family is going to, you know, be kind of, I mean, we're owners. So we'll be primary users, you know, it doesn't mean, I mean, it's not gonna be our primary residence. It'd be more of a secondary residence.
Of course.
So it won't be continuous for us. So when we're not there, we'd be interested in short-term rental.
Of course.
Yep, when you make the mortgage payment, so.
What are the questions, Jess?
And so is that two different licenses? One, it's fully owner occupied versus not? Is that correct?
Only one short-term rental license would be required, right?
Right. So they'll, they'll have to choose. They'll have to choose if they want to get a standard license or a primary license. So they'll have to choose which, and it'll be based on the availability of standard licenses at the time. We don't limit the amount of primary, but we do limit the amount of standard. So depending on what, you know, obviously, they're going to have to decide if it is a primary residence or if it's not. And that would determine what license they would be eligible for. But they couldn't have two, because you can't choose it as your primary and then say, we're gonna, you know, so they're gonna have to state one. They wouldn't be eligible for a primary license and a standard at the same, under the same annual, in the same year.
Okay.
Based on regulations.
That's, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear about that. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Sounds like one long-term rental and one short-term rental, potentially.
Right. And of course, we don't, we have no permitting for long-term.
Right.
Just for clarity.
Other questions or comments from the commission members? Howard, can you hear us?
Uh, this, this is Jason. I'll just ask one more thing on the, the residential equivalent unit is, how many people is that for when we're talking a short-term rental? Because I know there was a limit based on the capacity.
So the occupancy will be based on the size of the septic system. So when they, and we'll look at it as the house as a whole. So they won't be able to exceed on the short-term rental license for the upstairs. We'll have to take into account, you know, what the downstairs occupancy is. And we base that on two people per bedroom. So how many of our bedrooms are in the downstairs? We'll limit the license that we can issue on a short terminal on the, for the upstairs.
Okay. And to include if it's owner occupied as well, I mean, or?
So, right.
That, that's only with the standard license, not a primary?
It's with both.
With both, okay.
So if they come in and let's say they, it's a two-bedroom up and one-bedroom down, just for instance. I'm not sure that's exactly the right makeup for this particular home. But we would only issue a short terminal license for four people upstairs because there's two bedrooms upstairs. So whether it's primary or standard, the allowable occupancy for the short terminal license would be four people.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to clarify, the septic system has to be large enough for six people?
Correct. Correct.
Very good. Dave, any questions or comments?
None. Thank you.
Very good. And I don't chair all the time, so next steps?
Board commissioners? Oh, and I'm so sorry that we went to comment before we let the applicant. Thank you, Melissa. We haven't let that applicant present, so.
Well, I don't have a formal presentation. I really wanted to be here to observe and to hear and to be available, you know, if further information is needed. But, you know, the staff has been extremely supportive and helpful, and I want to thank, you know, Melissa, CC, and Ian for all the time you've committed to this. I really appreciate that. My son, Gray, and his wife, Maruna, are in the meeting as well. So we're all very interested in hopefully seeing this successful outcome, so. But, you know, I could go into a lot of details, but I'll leave that, you know, for another time.
Sure.
And then, just if the commissioners have any questions?
Any questions or comments? Suggestions?
Were there other, were there any site plan concerns from staff? I didn't know that there was any on the site plan concern?
No, there wasn't. It's pretty straightforward. The structure that the building permit is in, a bit issued, and so it's under construction. Yeah. Yeah.
And it's, it's close to being complete. I mean, the painting and the stone a few weeks ago. We're still waiting on some finished work, you know, putting in a countertop so the plumber can do his work. So that was supposed to be completed over the weekend. I guess I'll find out tonight. See it in progress and see where we are. But I'm hoping that I can call the plumber and say, please be there tomorrow.
And part of your application was adding an additional off-street parking place?
Yes. Yes, and that's, we already figured out where all those spots would be, yeah.
Very good.
And, and I do want to ask a question, and that is, when, when the final plumbing is done and we're ready for the, give the CO inspection, the final inspection, we, we follow the same procedures, I assume, to bring, you know, to, over at the inspector, call, call the office here, G.C. calls the office, gets an inspection schedule. And you guys normally do it next day. So that would still be the case with this? It'd be the next day for the most part?
Right, and, um, so typically we're looking for a sign-off. I think your driveway permit was done under, I mean, these are kind of building department questions, but happy to answer them. Your building permit was done under our department or was it done under, um, the metro district?
Under, under Lake County.
It was done under Lake County. Okay, so we, so we'll need final driveway.
Okay.
And you'll need final septic. And final building. And so Marla will check all of those things to make sure you've got, um, those other two components to your final, that you've got your final as-built on your septic system and that you've got your final inspection on driveway.
Okay.
And if those are all done, so those are kind of her check marks when she gets in the final inspection.
Right.
And then, then yeah, CO is imminent within a couple days or a day, depending. You know, just kind of workload is, but if you let her know if there's a time crunch in there somewhere with like perm financing or something like that, then, um, just, just give her a heads up. She's usually very accommodating.
And then one other step, following the CO, um, excuse me, the final inspection, we need to apply for a CO after that, correct?
Right.
And then that takes.
Like usually, usually a day.
Oh.
Yeah, she's, she's, and if you, if, like I said, if there's any kind of deadline you're trying to meet.
Well, we're trying to make sure, you know, long-term tenant, that we can give them a fairly solid day.
Sure, sure. So just work with, she's really great at accommodating schedules, especially Cam, so she'll, I'm sure she'll help you.
And I've read somewhere something about the, the building permits. This building permit we've had for, what, a year and a half now, I guess? That applies to the entire property, correct? Both, both the primary and the secondary?
Yep, as long, so we'd be looking to CO the whole home, because your, your, your accessory dwelling unit is subordinate to the primary. So when everything done together, yeah.
Okay.
Be back.
Very good.
Joey, we have a question.
Jason, go ahead.
I, I, I think this question is for Ann. How long is the CUP in effect? Or when would it be revisited or if it needed to?
That's a great question, Jason. So the CUP runs with the land. And the code says that if there is a basis for needing to revisit the CUP and staff becomes aware of it, we can refer a review of the CUP back to the Board of County Commissioners. But we basically have to have a kind of a show cause hearing of why we're taking it back for review. But the, the code allows us at any point in time, if we determine perhaps a condition of approval. So I'm talking generally, not just specific to Mr. Hauser's application this evening. But, you know, generally, we would have to have a basis for going back and reviewing what the code allows. The review of a conditional use permit at any time, if, based on a, you know, something that we've identified as a concern.
Okay.
That can even be triggered by complaints, correct?
Correct. And a lot of times for us, we are very, um, you know, that's, that's really kind of the nature of when we take in and we would start opening an investigation through code enforcement. And then if we determined that there was a basis, then we would take it to the board and we would notify the A.C.U.P. holder.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
All right, and no additional comments from the commissioners? Anybody in the audience? And I noticed a couple of people joined asleep. Probably get you to sign in for us. Any questions or comments? From the audience? No questions for me?
Thank you.
Very good. All right, well, then no rebuttal evidence is really required. So is there anything else that you'd like to say?
Again, I appreciate, you know, all the support and help.
Seems like you were very well organized, thank you. All right, I would entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing. From one of the commissioners?
Oh, I, I move that we close the evidentiary portion of the meeting.
Well done. Any second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Uh, can I make a conditional approval motion?
Just one moment, let's let the Board of County Commissioners.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Have time to.
Any other, any other commentary, Jason or Dave? Thanks for.
None here.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, now you can.
The chair would entertain a motion.
All right, I move that the planning commission recommend conditional approval to the Board of County Commissioners of file number two four dash three five, a conditional use permit application for an accessory dwelling unit on a parcel of land less than one acre pursuant to the standards of section five dot three dot one B at two zero two Panarc Drive, Twin Lakes, Colorado. Further finding that the approval criteria pursuant to Lake County Land Development Code, section three dot six dot one dot F, have been met as evidenced in the staff report dated October twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-four for file number two four dash three five. The conditions for approval are, one, applicant shall work with community planning and development to obtain a building permit and subsequent certificate of completion for a fully permitted accessory dwelling unit. Part of this process will include, but not limited to, approval from Leadville, Lake County Fire Department, Parkville Water, and Leadville Sanitation. Two, all statements, all statements made by the applicant in the application and hearing shall be considered conditions of approval.
Chair would suggest.
Was there something else we needed to add?
Nope, uh, your point number one, uh, under conditions of approval should change from Parkville Water and Leadville Sanitation to Mewa and the sanitation board.
You want me to reread that part?
Nope, you're good.
The environmental health specialist.
The end, sorry, Mewa and the environmental health specialist. Nope, we can make that change, Jason, thank you.
Okay.
Any second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Cool call, please.
Heather Lind? Howard Tritts? Joey Edwards?
Yes.
Steve Stevens? Dave Clark Farrell?
Yes.
And Jason Rufo?
Yes.
Thank you. Pardon me, is that the answer? I guess that's it. Motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close, okay. You beat me to it. I second it.
Chair notes, the Dave made a motion to approve, to close the public hearing, and Jason seconded. Thank you, gentlemen.
So we'll be taking the recommended motion to the Board of County Commissioners on their next date?
November fifth.
November fifth.
Next Tuesday.
It's gonna be a busy day.
Yes, it's gonna be a crazy busy day. And, um, and so we'll, we'll also present the statement to them on November fifth.
And then make final determination.
Thank you very much, and best of luck with your project.
Thank you, appreciate everybody. We did.
All right, gentlemen, anything else to discuss this afternoon? Ladies and gentlemen, excuse me?
Uh, the only question, the only question I have is that, that November twelfth meeting, is it, uh, that's gonna be a long? Is it November twelfth? I believe. It seems like we keep stacking more and more stuff on that, so is that gonna be a long?
The CUP for.
Yeah, it's the CUP for Tenth Mountain. I guess I'm not aware of anything else that's on the agenda.
It's gonna be the Sign Code.
Oh, so Sign Code has had a, you know, we are doing an extension on the moratorium. So based on our work session two weeks ago, um, we discovered we have more work to do. And it was not going to be ready on the twelfth. So I don't think it's, and actually I think that the CUP that I'm bringing to you on the twelfth is, um, it, it's actually a request to reduce the amount of density. It's a very unusual request, so I don't imagine that it is going to be a heavy lift. So, so I don't, I don't see a, a, a long agenda next, next time.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Very good. And how long are we extending the moratorium on the Sign Code?
That's a really good, uh, question. I'm right in the middle of writing it right now. And, um, I think statutorily we could go up to another six months, but I don't think that's what we'd want to. I think that we were thinking, um, another three? Is that what we, maybe about three or four?
It should be nice to see that get closed.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, I was just, just writing that, that's why I was a couple minutes late getting here or two minutes late, but, um, but yeah, the thought was that we, there's definitely a desire to get it. And I think we got such a clear direction from the work session that, um, I think we can probably bring something, put something together and, you know, I'll probably extend it for four with the hope that we get it done in three. So we don't have to ask for another extension.
If there's nothing additional to add, I would entertain a motion to close the meeting.
Oh, I think.
I think you did that.
I think we did that.
No.
We didn't close the meeting yet.
Oh, I thought we did have Bernie turn that.
Heather usually does that without a motion, but I'm used to making a motion. All right, that's okay. At four forty-nine, we will close this meeting of the Lake County Planning and Zoning Commission. Thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.